This time I'll call our July County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And I'll ask if you will to put your cell phones on either vibrate or cut it off. This time we'll stand and I'll ask Commissioner Langley to do the invocation and Commissioner Brenn to do the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to assemble here and Lord, we just ask for your guidance and your instruction concerning your people. You ordain government and let us be pleasing in thy sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Place flag.
The allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time I entertain any commissioner who wishes to make a disclosure regarding any agenda item that we have. Hearing none, we'll move to item number D, the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brenn, second by Commissioner Buzzio. All in favor? Those opposed? All right. At this time, we need a motion to go into the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Evans, is there a second?
Sir.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. At this time, I'll turn it over to you, Brian.
I see.
Or Anita, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing relates to the advanced metering infrastructure project. The next step in moving forward with the AMI project is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the borrowing of $4.5 million to finance the project and also seek the local government commission's approval of the installment purchase at the LGC's August the 7th meeting next month. So this public hearing is to receive comments on the Board of Commissioners adopting two resolutions later tonight. The first resolution authorizes Beaufort County to borrow funds on behalf of the seven water districts through the inter-local operating agreement. And the second resolution authorizes Beaufort County to enter into an installment purchase contract in the amount of $4.5 million to finance the advanced metering infrastructure project. Thank you.
Okay. This time entertain the public. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to step up to the podium and speak. If you will state your name and location or address. And are limited to three minutes.
My name is Louis Edwards, Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to stand up and speak in front of you. I understand how important it is to be, to move ahead in anything we do as far as like infrastructure. It's a very important matter. But one thing that bothers me about this whole thing, I've sat through a couple of meetings and I've heard some good things said about it and I've also heard some oppositions that made some really good sense. One of the things that concerns me is the fact that we're spending 4.5 or approximately $4.7 million for this project. When we spend this money for this project, that's coming out of the taxpayer. The taxpayer, when figured out according to the Water Department, we have 12,000 residents that use the meters. We have 60 businesses that use the meters, which is a total of 12,060 meters. If you take $4.7 million and divide that by the 12,060, you come up with a total of $389.72 that the taxpayer has to pay. You may remember when you were coming up as a young man, you met the woman of your life and you could live off of one man working and the wife staying at home being with children. In today's economy, it's even worse. It takes both people in the family to work and even then, they're strained at what they're doing. By raising taxes or taking this particular water meter system that we're talking about implementing and doing away with a system that's already working, you're placing a higher burden on the taxpayer and the people are trying to make it. I remember as a young man, when you were young here in Beaufort County, you could buy a piece of property for a little or nothing. And I don't fault people who've moved from the north to the south to try to better themselves because they bought when they were young and then they sold out and made a decent profit and they have decent retirement funds and so forth. I understand that. That's not a problem. But because of that and the greed in this county, what's happened, the real estate people as well as everybody else has got their hand in the pot trying to get more money. So it makes it harder for a young man and a young lady who's trying to make it in this county. How many people you see buy mobile homes and place on maybe a half acre lot or one acre lot? This proposal you're talking about doing is going to place a heavier burden on the taxpayer. Not only that, but according to what I found out, there are six county meter readers. They're looking right now to hire another one. The cutoff date is the 8th of June. Now because they're getting ready to hire another, that's seven. Four or five of those meter readers are going to lose their jobs and be sold out to two others who may be working there that will be paid higher money to actually take on the operation of operating this new system. When you do that, you're costing that, those individuals $120,900 divided among the four that they've lost in income, which places even greater burden. People are being taxed to death and the economy is going higher and higher. Now because of that, that added burden, you're going to add, let those people go to unemployment, which who covers the unemployment? State, federal, local? So what we need to do, instead of implementing a 4.7 or 4.5 million dollar water system, we need to think about the one that we have and use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, anyone else?
Along those same lines, I'm Donna Lay and I'm here to object to this board spending over $4 million for smart water meters. The decision to spend this money in this way is anything but smart. The return on investment is not only not smart, it's stupid in my opinion. Anyone with common sense knows you cannot borrow $4.4 million and finance it with $200,000 a year in savings. Will you even be able to pay for it before it becomes obsolete? It's foolish to think this proposal will result in any tangible savings in the Water Department. It will cost more than the $200,000 to maintain the meters and the network. Common sense says $200,000 will only buy three tanks to maintain the system. How much will a maintenance contract cost? Seeking deeds on that would give you a good idea of the cost to maintain whatever you do, whether you do it in the house or contracted out. Why not go to less frequent readings? Allow customers to opt into an annual or quarterly reading, paying a fixed amount in between readings and an adjustment amount after each reading. Privacy concerns escalate with any system that puts transmitters on private property and sends radio signals to a remote site. They can be hacked. Are you going to ensure bad people are not going to put Wi-Fi devices on our property and feed the signals from those devices into the smart meter network and intercept the signal somewhere along the line? Want proof the system being proposed is vulnerable to hacking? Demand a guarantee backed by bond from the vendor pushing this system and see how far you get. This single bid purchase is an example of bad decision making by the county staff and this board. Stop this coming train wreck. Demand the staff put this project out for sealed bids. Hire a neutral third party that is not a bidder to draw up specs and help assess the bids. Is this system capable of rationing water usage by central command? If this network is capable of shutting off water meters from a central locale, it is only a matter of time before somebody comes up with the idea, perhaps during the drought, of shutting down our meters, sort of like those Shave the Peak electric meters and switches do. How do these meters work? Will the system support transmission of shutdown commands to individual or blocks of meters? Not one penny of ratepayer money should be spent on this boondoggle unless it is voluntary on the part of the customers and the county can and will indemnify any water user who gets hacked. You guys have a dismal record of making poor decisions because your planning process is, in my opinion, inadequate. I blame that on the county manager, his staff, and on you who vote for badly planned projects financed with our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, any comments?
Yes, sir. This project was, was under a competitive bid, as you are aware. It is a project that was, that was previously bid by another municipality. We were able to take advantage of that through a piggybacking contract, which gave us prices for, for the competitive bidding. So the project has been competitively bid. And the vendor that put together the project for us is a third-party vendor who had nothing to do with and who is not bidding on the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as long as staff's making comments, I want to make a comment.
Go right ahead.
This is a really bad business deal. The water system is operated like a business, just like any other business would operate. It's not operated with a bottomless pit of government money that we can go out and tax people with. Consequently, business decisions apply to the running of the Water Department. There is nobody in this county that will go out and, that's a businessman, and invest $4.7 million in a project that has a return on the investment of $200,000 a year. My problem with this particular project is that it is not a business deal. When you do not get a return on investment, then it becomes what? An expense. And just as Mr. Edwards alluded to, $389 a year of increased cost. The water bills are going to go up. There's no question about that because somebody has to pay for this. And they're going to wake up in a year or two and they're going to realize that they don't have a return on investment, which they've already said they don't have a return on the investment. So what, what's really going on is if this goes through, they're raising the water rates of the people in the county. So it's a bad business deal. I'm not opposed to automating, modernizing whatever, the Water Department. But it has to be done in such a way that you get a return on the money that you spend. Without a return on the money you spend, it becomes an expense. And when it becomes an expense to a company, a company goes bankrupt. But all we're going to do is keep raising the water rates so that we can break even. Now these, these water systems have, have been run on thin ice insofar as financing goes up till now. The Commissioners did that deliberately. We did it deliberately. But now all of a sudden, we have a Board of Commissioners that disguises limit and what we're really doing is we're gold plating a water system. And there is no benefit to the users of the people within that water system to doing this.
Any other comments, any commissioner? Any other staff comment? Okay. Need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second. All those in favor coming out of the public hearing, raise your right hand. Thank you. This time we're down to item number F, the public comments. And our first speaker is Ms. Lay.
I am always here.
Thank you. All right. Our next one is Ms. Garrison.
Patricia Garrison. I live in Pantico. I am currently the Chair of the Beaufort County Republican Party. On June 16th, the Beaufort County Republican Executive Committee passed the following resolution. A resolution concerning Beaufort County budget and taxes. Whereas many citizens in Beaufort County are struggling financially, especially those on fixed incomes, and whereas county budget increases in discretionary spending have led to significant ad valorem property taxes that will be a burden on many of Beaufort County's taxpayers and set the stage for further tax increases in the future. Be it therefore resolved that the Beaufort County Republican Executive Committee calls upon the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners to reconsider its recent adoption of a county budget for the purpose of trying to eliminate the tax increases. And be it further resolved that the Beaufort County Republican Executive Committee calls upon the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners to consider practices that will help keep spending down in the future instead of creating a cycle of continuing tax increases. Such sound budgetary practices to include using zero-based budgeting instead of a continuation and expansion budget approach, requiring a competitive bid process for all significant county purchases, requiring all county departments to rank their priorities from most to least important, requiring the county manager to identify the areas he would recommend cutting if necessary to avoid a tax increase, continue to fund outside organizations which provide a well-defined public service such as volunteer fire departments, but eliminate payment to those that do not. Respectfully submitted, the Beaufort County Republican Party. May I approach and give each person a copy?
I'm a Democrat.
Which Republican?
I like it.
Our next speaker is Mr. Louis Edwards.
Commissioners, thank you once again. My name is Louis Edwards. I live here in Washington, North Carolina. There's a couple of things I'd like to address. Number one, it seems to be a popular topic here, is the taxes. I've been in my business for about 30 years. The property that I own has never been refurbished. The land has always been the same. The building's been the same. But my property value went up from 38,945 to 64,306. I did talk to Mr. Parker about it and he did tell me he thought he could do something with that. Didn't say he didn't suggest he could bring it all the way down to that. But my question is, is why is the property values going up while some other property values are going down? If the tax is the same, and you correct me if I'm wrong, if the tax is 5%, I'm just using a number, per property, that means the guys, their property values went up, their taxes are going to go up while the guys with the lower property values is going down. I don't understand all that particular part, but I'm just wondering why mine went up, my property value went up. A lot of people in Beaufort County that I've even talked to have made that same question, wondering why these things have happened, why is this going that way? So can you somehow revamp this property tax, get everybody on the same playing field? If you're going to raise one guy's property by 20,000, why not raise everybody else's by 20,000? If you're going to lower everybody's by 5,000 or 10,000, then lower everybody's by 10,000. And I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to increase or decrease the tax so that you can have more money to spend because you've got to have money to spend. That's just business. But be fair about it. Do what's right. Remember where you were when you were younger, getting involved in this stuff, how it affected you. And then think about the people in the county of Beaufort County, the taxes, the things and burdens you're placing on these people and help the people out. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gerald Seifman. Tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Pamlico Amateur Radio Club of Beaufort County. When a natural disaster occurs, there are periods of time when cell phones will not work, land phones are disabled, and even emergency services, communications systems are impacted. The American Radio Relay League, or ARRL, is a national association of amateur radio in the United States and represents over 170,000 FCC licensed amateurs. Since 1933, the ARRL has conducted a 24-hour event on the fourth weekend of June known as Field Day. ARRL Field Day constitutes the largest test and demonstration of amateur radio's capabilities in times of need. Field Day is ham radio's open house where more than 40,000 hams throughout North America set up temporary transmitting stations in public places to demonstrate ham radio's science, skill, and service to our communities. It combines public service, emergency preparedness, community outreach, and technical skills all in a single event. Field Day is a picnic, a campout, an informal contest, an opportunity to promote amateur radio, but most importantly, demonstrate emergency communications practice without relying on public utilities to power ham radios. The Pamlico Amateur Radio Club would like to thank County Commissioner Hood Richardson, who took time on June 23rd to come out and show support for our activities in amateur radio. In addition, we'd like to thank Mr. Chris Newkirk, Beaufort County Operations Chief of Emergency Management, who also came out to show support for our organization in amateur radio. Lastly, we want to thank Beaufort County Emergency Services Director, Mr. Carney Hedgepath, for his agency's support of amateur radio throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mr. Anderson.
Can this mic be turned on or?
It's on.
It is on?
It is on.
Hello? Okay. It didn't sound like it, but anyway. Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak this afternoon. My name is Johnny Anderson. I am a member of this county and I'm speaking on behalf of my nephew Cory Anderson, on behalf of my family. Some of you guys in here may think this is old news. You may think that I've heard this before, but I just challenge you to listen to what I got to say tonight as if Cory had have been your son, okay? Because to my brother, who was his dad, there's nothing old about this. It's just as fresh with him as it was when it happened in the beginning. And I wish and I pray that it would be the same way to you guys as Commissioners and to you guys as the audience and as the public. But it's been over a year now. We're still waiting for answers to questions concerning his death while he was in the custody of Sheriff Coleman and in the Beaufort County Jail. These questions are same questions, but they're not old. They're still relevant. Why was the family not notified when Cory was taken to the hospital seeing as how he was deathly sick? It wasn't a question of how sick he was. He was deathly sick when he was taken. Why was he allowed to get that sick before he was taken to the hospital if they're taking daily rounds and doing the things at the jail that they're supposed to be doing? How could he have gotten that sick before they saw the need to take him to the hospital? He was taken to the hospital on May the 7th. He died on May the 8th. Another question we have is why are three days of progress notes missing from Cory's medical file? The notes from the 4th, 5th, and 6th are missing. There are no progress notes for Cory. Maybe that's how he got so sick before they took him on the 7th. But these were the three days right before he was taken to the hospital. I will say tonight that since I've talked to you last, Chief Deputy Rose has taken me and my sisters to the jail and we've taken a tour of the jail. We've got an ID, we've seen some of the things that go on, but that, that has in no way, shape, or form resolved our questions. It doesn't make me feel any better about what happened to Cory, even though I do appreciate him taking time to do that, even though it's his duty to do. But I say to this, you know, where was the oversight when Cory was in the jail? Where was it? Who was responsible for making the rounds and making sure Cory wouldn't get this sick or any other inmate as far as that goes? How did that happen? And then, you know, where is the accountability of the people who are running the jail? We know that the sheriff is, he's where the buck stops. He's the one that made, he's the one that would give, give permission or make sure that Cory's family was called when Cory was taken to the hospital. He's the one that's supposed to be making sure that the things are being done in the jail for the inmates that are supposed to be done. Where is the accountability? There hasn't been any. Simply put, I don't think, not only has there not been enough oversight and no accountability, but from the, there's been nothing from the sheriff at all. So with that being said, that's the only conclusion that you can come to. And I know my three minutes are up, but I want to say that-
I'll give you one more minute.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I'd like to have two, but I'll take one, okay? I'll challenge you guys as Commissioners tonight to tell you that I don't believe since you've been Commissioners or anybody else has been a Commissioner, that there's never been a case brought to you or against any county where a family's been notified when their inmate has been taken to the jail and deathly sick. I don't think that's ever happened and I don't think it ever will. I think that's only common sense. But the US Commissioners, I would say this to you. As Commissioners, I believe that you owe it to my family as well as to the citizens of the county that you represent to pass the ordinance that I know is going to be discussed tonight, that we've discussed here for a while. And we're going to keep coming back if it don't get passed tonight. But not just as Commissioners, but as men who want to do the right thing.
Mr. Anderson.
I challenge you tonight, yes, sir-
Your time is up.
-to, to pass this ordinance and hear what's been said. Thank you guys for the time.
All right. That ends the public comments. At this time, we entertain a motion to accept the, to approve the items for consent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item number four for discussion.
Okay.
That's the one that has to do with inmate medical.
All right. We'll move that to item number 10.
Item what?
Item number 10. Under action or decisions.
Does that mean that the people that want to hear this are going to have to sit through the whole meeting?
Uh, yes.
Well, you know, if it can be passed as a consent item, you know, it must be important enough to be upfront. Why don't we move the consent to the end of the, end of the meeting? You know, I don't think it's fair for people to have to sit here through the whole meeting to hear an item that's pulled.
It's moved to item number 10 under decisions. Okay. Got a motion and a second. Was there any other items needed to be pulled? All right. All those in favor of the consent items? Commissioner Brenn and the second by Commissioner Evans.
What's your motion? Approve the consent.
To approve?
So moved. Second.
We got a motion.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the, the consent items for approval? All right. Those opposed? Six, one. All right. We're down to item number H, items for discussion. The first one is the memorandum of understanding Highspill 630 Session Law 2017-41.
Thank you, Chairman Waters, and the rest of the commissioners. Back in February at the Commissioners' Budget Retreat, I talked about House Bill 630, Session Law 2017-41, and the possible impacts it may have to DSS and the county. And tonight, I just wanted to provide you an update on this to the board, as well as some of the requirements in the law that are starting to be enacted. One of the provisions in House Bill 630 was that each county in the state develop a memorandum of understanding, which is what the final product ended up being called, it started out being called a contract, but through several months of negotiation back and forth with the Secretary's Office of DHHS, or the Department of Health and Human Services, the name was changed to memorandum of understanding. And that's between, the memorandum is between the county and the Department of Health and Human Services, and it spells out certain measures that each county must meet in the Department of Social Services. While some of the measures in the MOU are attainable, some are not, including some child welfare measures which rely on factors beyond the agency's control, such as court decisions and timelines. The North Carolina Association of County Directors of Social Services participated in numerous meetings with state staff, including Deputy Secretary of Human Services Susan Perry Manning, and Assistant Secretary Michael Beckett regarding ongoing concerns from agencies across the state about the inability to meet some of the measures. While the law spelled out the measures counties had to meet, it did not include any additional funding to assist the counties with meeting the measures. The MOU also states that if a county fails to meet the measures after a corrective action plan is implemented, it could result in the state takeover of the agency. The final version of the MOU was received on May 31st of 2018, and was due back to the state by June 29th of 2018. The Association's Executive Committee was told by the state that if counties failed to sign the agreement, then we would be breaking the law. I've heard from several counties that they were not going to sign the MOU, and I've seen several that were sending an attachment, or a resolution, or an addendum to the MOU that had those returned last Thursday and Friday, saying they must send the MOU back in without any attachments. And Brian and I had several conversations about that, and since we both are law-abiding citizens, we signed the MOU, and ours was returned the second weekend, June.
Excuse me, shouldn't the commissioners approve something that is this important before the manager signs it? What authority does the manager have? We've had problems with contracts in here before.
We'll come back to that. Let her finish her presentation, and we'll come back. Any comment?
Okay. Other factors that will contribute to our ability to meet the requirements in the MOU is the recent rollout on May 30th and 31st of the Modified Child Welfare Manual, and the rollout of child welfare in NCFAST. Both of these add additional requirements and duties for child welfare staff, but again, does not include any additional funding to support the new requirements. The new policy requirements include our staff, when we initiate a Child Protective Services report, interviewing each child privately at each home visit, even for cases on the family assessment track, which had allowed for family-centered interviews, conducting a search of the entire house and property at least once a month while the assessments opened. The policy also originally included a check of 911 calls to the house on all cases, which now we do the checks if it's a type of case like domestic violence, where the 911 calls could give additional information. This requirement is currently being reconsidered by the secretary because of the increased demands on workload, not only for DSS, but for law enforcement. Changes in foster care visits, where we will have to see the child within three days instead of seven days when a child is placed. This would be an issue if the child had behavioral or medical needs which caused them to be placed outside the county and sometimes outside the state. Permanency planning meetings for children in foster care will now have to occur every 90 days versus every six months. Several weeks ago, I was in Raleigh, Deputy Secretary Perry Manning stated that this policy had not been vetted properly, and that the state would be reviewing for corrections over the next several weeks, and the rollout wouldn't start on July 1st, but instead be delayed until September 1st. The last concern with meeting the requirements in the MOU is the lack of reliable data and reports that agents, local agencies receive from the state. We have struggled continually since the rollout of NCFAST with having consistent and accurate reports to monitor the work. Some other provisions in the House Bill 630 and the Session Law included establishing a social services work group that was directed to study what state regional offices would look like, and to make recommendations around improving state supervision to the General Assembly. The state supervised offices would be to provide guidance and support to local departments of social services. This was addressed in Phase 1 of the work group, and the final report, which is in your pack, your board packet, which was issued on March 29th. Phase 2 of the work group, which is extremely concerning to local departments of social services, is to develop recommendations regarding a vision for transitioning the state from a county-administered system to a regionally-administered system. House Bill 630 states that North Carolina requires a plan of action to systematically reform the child welfare system and reduce the number of departments of social services to allow for better supervision and administration of social service programs. As I stated back at the Budget Retreat, this is extremely concerning considering the vulnerable populations that we serve, and there's a current example in our state of regionalization of critical mental health, substance abuse, and developmentally delayed services, which we are about 10 years into, and by most accounts, has not gone well. It's never good when control is removed from the local level. In your packet, I've also provided a copy of House Bill 630 and Session Law 2017-41, with the pages marked that speak to local regionalization. They include pages 1, 2, and 9 of the law, and I've also included a copy of the Social Services Work Group Phase 1 report that speaks to the possible regionalization of social services on page 1, 31, and 33. And the last thing I wanted to talk about, if all of that wasn't good enough news, counties are now responsible for Medicaid paybacks for county errors in the Medicaid program. And while our workers strive daily to complete applications and recertifications timely and accurately, we are humans. This new policy doesn't include a threshold for errors, as some other programs do, in the 3% to 5% range. Starting with the 2017 Single County Audit, errors found are resulting in counties' paybacks for all claims for that individual. We had no findings in our last audit, but I did learn several weeks ago in Raleigh that 26 counties do have paybacks for the 2017 audits, with the highest being $65,000, the lowest being 200 to 300, in the 200 to 300 range, and the average being 1,000 to $5,000. If there is a payback, counties will receive an invoice from the State Controller's Office, and will have 60 days to send in the check once we receive the notice. In closing, there are many new requirements that will result in the possibility of DSS needing to request additional staff next year to help us meet the new requirements. I think it's going to take strong advocacy on our part to let legislators know counties cannot alone shoulder the burden of the increase in funded needed to meet these new requirements, and that they must include funding to go along with the new requirements.
Good job.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, the approval of an agreement like this, as far-reaching as it is, I don't think the manager had the authority to sign it without it coming to the commissioners. I don't remember it coming in front of me, did it?
It did not, no, sir.
See, we've got a problem. We've got a serious problem.
It is, it is state law that it be signed. We actually had that conversation with them, and they said, here's, here's the agreement.
You don't work for the state, you work for me, and I'm telling you, you can't sign it without bringing it in front of the commissioners.
Let me finish, Commissioner Richardson, please. The conversation was that it was an agreement, an MOU, that you could not change, you could not do anything to it, you had to sign it, and it had to be done by the end of the fiscal year. The conversations with the association have been going on for a while, they were working on that. The conversations with the attorneys involved was that when you have an agreement that the other side is not able to make any amendments to, then it is not a valid agreement. However, we were told we had to sign it, and we would sign it. So, that is what we did.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Brian and Melanie, I commend you, I've been working on this, on this thing for several months. And it says a memorandum of understanding, that is not what it is. It's an order telling you what to do. And the sad thing about it, if you guys hadn't signed it, what would have happened to our citizens here in Beaufort County? We didn't have, we didn't have no say-so. This is Senator Barringer, this is Senator Barringer's deal, this is state law, that these things are going to happen. They have been fighting, I was up Saturday, when Secretary Cohen, I think that's her name, oh, the guys in that hood act just like you did, but she didn't have a choice, it was the law.
Wait a minute, this is rigged by the state, just like a lot of other stuff that comes from the state is rigged by the state. How long, how much notice did the county have that we had to sign this document? They didn't throw it down in front of you? You had months of notice.
We didn't have months of notice. We got the information-
We got the final, the final document, they went back and forth with corrections on May 31st.
Well-
And they were still going back, because the association, actually, the first one they sent was incorrect, and they sent out to everybody, and they had to come back and correct it again, so it was past our-
We had a meeting the 1st of June, there have been rumblings about dictatorship coming out of Raleigh, and what this is, if you read this stuff, I've read most of it, it's not Mamby-Mamby stuff. What they're going to do is install another level of bureaucrats, and call them regional people, over the counties, and then the counties have to account to these people that are intermediate. All they're doing is creating another level of bureaucracy to have to deal with. Now, we should have been involved in this, if we saw this coming more, I've heard rumblings about this, but I kept waiting for somebody to put something in front of the commissioners. I don't like this business of we had to sign it, so we signed it. You don't live in a dictatorship. We're a democracy. Just because somebody says you've got to sign something, you don't got to sign it. It's that simple. And what I'm saying to you is, as long as I'm a commissioner, I expect this kind of stuff to be brought to the commissioners. If you felt like you had to sign something that was dictatorial, because I've read this stuff, there's a lot of money that the county can lose and waste and be spending in this mess. You should have called a special meeting of commissioners, and we should have been in here discussing this. That's how county government works. It doesn't work because somebody, bureaucrat somewhere tells you, you've got to sign something. I don't want to see any more of that.
I appreciate you signing it, Brian, I don't want to be a dictator.
Well, some of us, some of us just bend over and just give up, because we're bureaucrats. I understand your background, your background is bureaucracy.
Yours is bullying.
Mine is not bureaucracy. Mine is democracy.
And yours is bullying.
Yeah, no, mine's not bullying, we've got certain rights. We should, we should have had a special call meeting, and we should have called in our legislators, and we should have been talking to them.
To who?
Our legislators.
Good luck.
Doesn't matter to me. If you have a special call meeting, and you invite the legislators to discuss something, and they don't show up, that's their problem. You guys know how to surrender. You do not know how to win battles.
All right.
House Bill 630, it was approved by the state legislature.
It was.
Where does our authority come from, Brian?
Your authority comes from the state.
From the state.
Not Hood.
Our authority comes from the people and the voters, it does not come from a central government somewhere. We're losing democracy by the day because of guys like you that surrender, and give up, and start saying somebody else is a higher authority. Remember, we lived with this with the Democrats for 30 years, oh, there's a higher authority, and you have to follow what the higher authority says. Well, how do you think Donald Trump got elected President of the United States? Because people got tired of that.
And I guess our Republican, they're in control of the state legislature, they're the ones that pass the bill.
I don't care who's in control of it, if it's a bad bill, it's a bad bill, and this is a bad bill, and as commissioners, we should be looking after the people of this county better than we're looking out of them. You guys can, you guys can tax them to death, but you sure can't get up and represent them. Now, what are we going to do about this?
We're going to get six more Hoods.
You need them.
In the county-
Gentlemen. Mr. Chairman. Point of order, okay? Commissioner Busdette.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to confess, and I know you worked hard on this, Commissioner Hood, but I want to thank the county manager for doing what was expected to be done, and what was required to be done. Nobody should, any employee of this county should enlist this to harangue and unprofessionalism, it's just uncalled for. So, thank you.
Brian, refresh, or Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
The state association, have we actually opposed the regional offices?
Yes.
That was the resolution?
Yes. Well, we should have done more. This, you don't realize how much money this can cost the county. She said they're not giving us any money to, excuse me, support the increased work that we're supposed to be doing. Did you read this? I don't think one of you read it.
I did.
I don't think a single one, okay. Well, what does it say in there about our responsibility if the state needs more money?
Well-
What does it say?
Do you want to talk about the-
No, 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 I'm asking a commissioner, a representative of the public, you're bucking it off like you usually do, to the staff to let the staff come for you. You said you read this, you didn't read this.
I call you, just, just sit back and relax.
He can bust a blood vessel.
And in our finance committee, Anita, you started to talk, you talked to us about we were going to have to have an audit, a separate audit from our regular audit-
Yes.
-as it related to eligibility, which I guess would address some of the potential payback.
It's part of the Single County Audit, it's included in that.
I was notified about two weeks ago that we would be required to do an additional engagement for an audit of the Medicaid eligibility and the calculations that are done by the DSS staff to make sure that we're in compliance with the rules and regulations. And it is a separate engagement from our regular annual audit, and we're looking at an additional cost of around $6,000 for that. I'd like to bring that to you.
Who are they going to allow to do that audit?
We can choose any auditor that's qualified.
To do a Medicaid audit? I don't think so. They may let you get away with it the first year, but after that, you're going to be having to hire somebody that knows something about Medicaid to do a Medicaid audit.
You didn't let me finish, Commissioner.
All right.
We can hire any auditor that's been approved to do the audits by the local government commission. So, they vet that for us, and determine who's qualified to do the audits.
Any other commissioner?
I just want one question, Mr. Chairman. The way I hear this, this was a mandate from the legislation, passed by the legislation, signed by the governor, correct? This is similar to what Republicans have done to us in the past, a mandate where we had to hire four additional appointees, employees for the jail. We keep getting from the Republicans in the House and the Senate mandates that putting increased taxes on our residents in this county, this is a possible, another example of a mandate.
Well, I'm going to answer the question that the chairman couldn't answer, I'm going to answer it. What it says is that you will cuss the money, the county commission, the taxpayers will pay it.
Yeah, you've said that one time.
No, I didn't say that one time.
Okay. Commissioner Lang.
Well, and in response to something Commissioner Richardson said, is our representatives in Beaufort Langdon, they have absolutely, positively nothing to lose, neither will be in the legislature in 2019, so you can't force them to come here and do anything. And to be perfectly honest with you, from my perspective, they're not part of the solution, they are part of the problem.
Any other comment? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, item number two, under discussion is the reappraisal process. Bobby?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, as everyone knows, we've finished our revaluation for 2018, running a little late, but we had a lot of problems beginning and through the whole process. We were using new software for the first time to do a revaluation, so-
Bobby, can you pull that mic up?
Yes, sir. Better?
No.
As you know, we use a new software, and there was problems getting started with it, and we had some problems during the whole process. Well, tonight, I have, we've had some questions asked, and I have Mr. Fred Pearson, owner of Pearson's Appraisal Corporation, and Mr. Billy Putney, who was our project manager here, to answer any questions that you may like to ask. Mr. Pearson? Mr. Pearson, if you would like to come up, and Mr. Putney? They can answer, I think, most any. Mr. Pearson's been around for years.
I have, quite a few years.
Okay.
I've never seen, like, the same.
What is your name, sir?
I'm sorry?
I didn't catch your last name.
Fred Pearson.
Pearson?
Yes.
I have a question. Oh, okay. I was waiting for you. Could you tell me how you evaluate or put an appraisal on empty lots?
Well, I'll let Bill Putney probably tell you better than me because they did most of them here. But we try to look at comparable sales and use those. That's basically what we try to do. We try to see if they're fair market value sales. If they are, we try to use them. We try to assess property by those.
So it's based upon...
Property sales.
Similar.
Yes.
Is it similar?
Yes.
What do you, when you, similar, what does similar mean to you? Same type of lot, corner lot?
You may have a street, and if it's basically about the same size and it doesn't have any water access to it, you know, it's, they're all the same, it should be assessed pretty close to the same. If you've got one that has a nice water view to it, and maybe the water's right across the road, and that view can't be obstructed, it might have a little higher value because it's a water view lot.
So if you have a landlocked community, which we have a number in this county?
Yes.
And the view is usually another empty lot or another house, all those lots were basically valued about the same?
It should be.
According to what's sold in that particular landlocked area?
They should be, yes.
They should be. When you say should be, I'm just trying to get at it because I saw some differences. So when you say should be, what does that mean?
That means that, to my knowledge, they are. I have not looked at every one of them, so I can't tell you for sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Brand?
Yeah, just one question. When you evaluate these lots, especially ones with no houses on them?
Yes.
Do you look to see what they, these particular lots have been selling for for the last three or four years?
I think we look for the last two, two to three years.
Well, why is the property value so high on these lots, under like $45,000, under only selling for $20,000 or $25,000? Don't we take a look at that?
It depends on, too, how many you've had to sell in there. If you've had three or four lots to sell for $25,000, and we've got 40 on them, we're probably too high. But, you know, it just, you've got some subdivisions, they may have sold for a lot of money at one time. We've lowered them probably in the last two revouts. And, you know, you have some of them, you have one sell for $15,000. Somebody just wants to get rid of it. Is that the market value? You have to kind of look at what the average.
And you don't take that into consideration, right?
Yes, sir. We try to look at all the sales.
Mr. Richardson.
Well, if you're sitting out there in the audience or you're out there in TV land, there's no way that you could possibly know what this charade is about. Let me tell you what it's about. There are great disparities in the tax revaluation in Beaufort County that was just completed. Those go to a lot of people complaining about undeveloped lots that are all over the county that are valued as much as twice and better what the recent sales have been. That's what this is about. I have an item on the agenda, and they conveniently separated me from this guy on the program tonight so that I'll make my motion after everybody's forgot what this is all about. But what's going on here is waterfront properties came down in value drastically. Properties that had sold at the peak of the boom when we did our last revaluation eight years ago for $250,000 were selling for $40,000. So if you're going to do a revaluation and you're not going to have to make a big adjustment in what's called revenue neutral, which means we just want to collect the same amount of money that we collected last time, and you're not going to have to make a big adjustment, what do you do? You know you've got to lower the waterfront lots a lot. You can't get out of that. Just a little bit, won't do it, there's too much of a record. So you lower those a lot, and then you raise the lots that have been low priced in the past. You raise everybody else in the back country to make it as even as you can. And you come up with a 3% revenue neutral tax valuation. Now, I doubt there are very many people in the county would believe that from eight years ago until now, all of the property in Beaufort County is worth just 3% less than it was then. I don't. So what's going on here is, I'm going to make a motion later on in this meeting that we hire somebody to come in and look at two kinds of property. Commercial properties are valued through the ceiling on what they're really worth. So are lots in the back country, are valued, lots in Cypress Landing, for instance, where you wouldn't think they would go this low, but they're selling $20,000 and $25,000. They're valued $50,000 and $60,000. Obviously, there's something wrong. And that's true when you go all over the county. We need to look at this thing again. Now, everybody gets all nervous and shudder because we have just passed the budget. Bills, tax bills have to be sent out based upon the budget when we set the tax rate. If you can't send tax bills out in time, people are going to be paying taxes way late. The county may have a problem with cash flow. So there's all kinds of big problems here. We need to work out a way to be fair to the people in the county on revaluing properties. I strongly suspect that these people were told we don't want a big difference in the tax values overall in the county. I strongly suspect that this was rigged so it would be this way. And I'm going to say it right in front of them. They've been working for us for, what, 15 years that I know of? And they've always done a good job. But we've got a problem this year with this. We have to be fair to people. Mecklenburg County had the same kind of a problem seven or eight years ago. Guess what? They got sued. They did go back and fix it. We need to work out a way to revalue this stuff to what it's supposed to be, to go ahead and pay the taxes this year and make adjustments next year. Sounds like a big deal, doesn't it, when you start readjusting tax bills? But I'm for fairness. I'm for fairness. You can't value a lot at twice what lots in the neighborhood have been selling for. And more than one lot has been sold for that. So if you want me to make my motion now, or you want to bring this up for discussion later on, it doesn't matter to me. But that's why Bobby brought this guy in here today. He's always done a good job for us. Because he knows he's got a problem. He knows when people get their tax bills this fall, they're going to start looking and comparing, and then this thing's going to boil over. Let's fix it before it boils over.
Commissioner Evans?
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
When you're looking at lots, undeveloped lots in a magnetized community, non-magnetized, so you've got a couple of, you've got a golf course, you've got a marina, you've got a bay club, you've got two swimming pools?
Yes.
And then you can even, and you go through all these categories, and then you go down as it cleared, is it marsh, is it sloped, how big is it rolling to the state, how much is it going to take to clear? Doesn't all those factors go in to coming at a lower price?
They do, but when you're in a subdivision and all the lots are about the same price, topography's about the same, all of those lots should be the same. Now, if you get out in some areas that maybe parts of the lots might be low and wet, hard to build on, no sewer, that's a totally different situation. But, you know...
Okay. Thank you.
The only thing I can say is that I feel like we've done the best job we can. Anytime you're appraised 50,000 pieces of properties, there could be some things wrong. That's why they got another appeal, which is a property tax commission. And anybody can appeal the property to the property tax commission. And we'll be there.
Don't you think you should go back, if we have this much difference in these lots, don't you think you should go back and look at all of the undeveloped lots in the county and go back and look at the commercial properties?
I'll do whatever the board asks me to do.
I move that we request that all undeveloped lots in Beaufort County...
This is a discussion item right now. We're going to come back to that later. Any other commissioner?
Yeah, I got one more, Brian. Have you found that some people in Beaufort County don't want their property values down?
I can tell you, in other localities I've worked in, that I've lowered properties, I've had people to come and tell me they really didn't feel like it should go down that low. They paid a lot of money for it at one time, and they hate to see their value go down. But we have to reflect the market. Most of, I think it was Cypress Landing, we lowered the values in there, and you have to just draw a line and see where you're going to stop. And that's a judgment call.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What I find very troubling about this discussion is not that we had some good discussion, had a good idea now on how you evaluate lots, but when we start having allegations of corruption thrown around, that troubles me. It's either we have facts to back that up or those allegations should be withdrawn. Because when I, you begin to throw around that county staff is corrupt, the vendor is corrupt, the tax man is corrupt, those are serious charges, very serious charges. And if you have evidence of that, turn it over to the sheriff of the state and let him investigate it. But I'm second hearing allegations against the employees of this county and the vendors that we use. It is so unprofessional that it's sickening.
I'm sorry that you're disappointed, but I'm an honest person.
I'm not disappointed. It's so unprofessional, it's unbelievable.
Less professional, define professional. You keep saying professional. What is professional?
It ain't you, for one thing.
No. Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Get back to the discussion.
I'm getting back to the discussion. May I?
Yes.
I don't know who told you to keep the profit tax, but I want to clear Ed Booth. I didn't do it.
Nobody. No one instructed me in any way on how to assess property here and what to do.
Thank you.
Bill, did anybody tell you how to assess property here?
Thank you.
Did you have a meeting with the chairman? Okay.
Thank you.
I hope the Beaufort Observer will print that. You know...
You're welcome to write an article. We'll print it. Write an article. We'll print it.
You're what I call fake news.
No. You write an article. I've given you an opportunity to do away with what you call fake news. You write the article.
Look.
Any one of you can write the article. You're out of order.
I would highly recommend any property owner in Beaufort County that is not pleased with the assessment to make appeal to the property tax commission. They have a board in Richmond, I mean, in Raleigh, excuse me. And, you know, they'll hear their concerns. They have to do a written appeal on it. You have to state the reason why it's too high, list comparables, and that's a whole separate board that will listen to their concerns. And I would suggest anybody has any concerns to do that. And it doesn't cost much to do that either. They do not have to be represented by an attorney unless it's a corporation.
Thank you.
Mr. Pearson, we had an individual come before the E and R, and he used a sale that had no revenue stamps on it. What do you do in that case? Do you pull that one?
I probably would not use that one.
Would not use that? Is that suspicious?
Yes.
Okay. If it is, you know, the banks sold portfolios to third parties, and they've put them out there and just dropped them. And if one sold for $14,000, would you use that one?
No, sir.
If it sold for $18,000, would you use that?
No, sir.
If it sold for $21,500, would you use that?
I wouldn't have used it if it sold for $60,000.
If you sold nine sales of $20,000, all of them the same thing, and one for 45, what would be your thought on that?
What makes a market sale is what a property is sale from a reasonable buyer, reasonable seller, reasonable length of time of sale, and a reasonable amount of financing. What would that property bring on the market? If it's a forced sale or unloading a bunch of lots, I would not consider that a market sale.
Any other questions of Mr. Pearson?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one thing. If either Mr. Pearson or Mr. Parker could explain again to folks the process, this is a time-treasured process that is very structured, it's laid out in the way it works. If they could explain the process by which, when they finish a revaluation, there is an informal appeal hearing where people can come in and have a conversation directly with the people who did the appraisal. That's the first step. The second step is that they can go to the Board of Equalization and Review, which they have gone through, which this board sits as Board of Equalization and Review. They don't like what they heard when they got the appraisal. If they didn't like it, they had the ability to go and talk to the actual appraiser who did the work and understand how that happened. If they didn't like that, they have the opportunity to come to you as the Board of Commissioners who sits as the Board of Equalization and Review. They can, you can make changes. They can like that or they can not like that. The next step, as Mr. Pearson has said, is to the State Property Tax Commission. So there's a process by which all of this goes through. Bobby, do you recall how many people came to the Board of Equalization and Review? How many cases you heard?
About 44.
And how many parcels? And how many parcels are there in Beaufort County?
45,000. I think we had about 1,100, 1,200 or so. Is that correct? What we said, yes, that's all the people that appealed.
I guess my question would be to Mr. Pearson or Mr. Putney, with those kind of percentages, is that indicative of a far-ranging, widespread issue with your work?
An average, an average for, it's usually about 5% of your parcels. So if you've got 45,000 parcels, usually it's 2,500 appeals. That's just normal.
2,500 appeals?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And we had 11?
Yes.
1,100?
And then, as you said, your next step is the property tax commission. You fill out a form, send it in, they will do it, and we will also review it, too. And then you can also appeal it to the courts. That's pretty much the steps a taxpayer has.
Fred, will you, will you or Ellie address the commercial side? We've talked about the...
Yes. The larger increases that we got were in your chain-type commercial properties such as Family Dollar, General Dollar, fast food restaurants. All those, the businesses that are doing well got the largest increase. Apartments got a pretty good increase.
Drugstores.
Drugstores, yes. All the chain types of properties got a pretty good increase.
I don't understand why you said what you said. You said that the people that are doing well got a higher tax bill.
That commercial properties doing the most business got a higher assessment. They generate more revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment.
One comment, since this is being televised, is that we had people bring in MLS print ads.
Yes.
And I'd say 50% of those were dated in 2018.
Yes.
And the process was done as of January 1, 2018.
That is correct.
So any sale after that wouldn't have any impact on that?
That's correct. We, we look at anything previous to that, anything that sold in 2017 and 2016.
And, and this one last question, it's not a question, to be a comment, there was a misstatement earlier about the total valuation in the county. The total valuation went down 5.5...
Five and a half percent.
Five and a half percent, not three.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I add one?
You sure can.
Property Tax Commission. We send out letters after we have reviewed this property, and on the letter that we send out is a link to the Property Tax Commission, how to get a form. You can call us, or you can just write a letter to the Property Tax Commission. There's so many ways to get in touch with the Property Tax Commission, so if you want to go, there's no problem. Give me a call, I'll get you a form, tell you how to get a form, or write a letter.
Thank you very much.
That's all right.
Okay, we're down to item number four, notifying designated parties when prisoners are admitted to hospital update. Commissioner Richardson.
The, what I want to hear from, is the manager and the attorney about what's the status of their reports from the people that they made inquiries to.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll be glad to take that one first. You have, you have, you've previously received from me information from the associate, from the, from the School of Government. You've also received information from me previously from the Sheriff's Association, which were two of the entities that you asked that we checked with. You have also, last week, I received an email that I forwarded to all of you from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. That was the third group that you asked me to look at, and I'll be glad to read that to you for the record. And that is Mr. Ali Good. Kevin Leonard asks that I respond to your question concerning whether a county can pass an ordinance requiring a sheriff to adopt a specific policy for his or her office. While a Board of County Commissioners has some nominal influence over a sheriff's office due to the commissioner's ability to set the sheriff's budget, I am unaware of anything in North Carolina law that would suggest a sheriff reports to the Board of County Commissioners. As sheriffs are elected officials, it is my understanding they are, they have autonomous and independent authority to adopt specific policies for their offices. I hope this information is helpful regardless, regards Adam Pridemore, who is the Legislative Counsel for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And you have that information, and I think that fulfills the request that you made of me for those three entities. Thank you.
David, do you have any update?
I got a letter from, from the Attorney General's Office, directed to Mr. Richardson, who apparently wrote a letter. He didn't favor me with a copy of the letter he wrote.
I don't have to.
I'm sorry?
I don't have to.
It's just a polite, professional thing that...
Well, you didn't favor me with the first letter you sent. I had to demand it to get it.
I did.
I treat people like they treat me.
I sent it to everybody. In any case, he received a letter back, and they're going to look into it. He says that they have no record, I do not have a record of receiving your April 24, 2018 letter. So I have not received that. As you know, I have shared with you three or four things that I have uncovered or read about on this subject.
David, you stay a little closer to Mike, please.
Yeah, sure. Not the, not the least of these were, were the response from Mr. Caldwell, Executive Vice President, General Counsel, North Carolina Sheriff's Association. Said that he concurred 100% with the county attorney's email inquiry, and says if any ordinance is adopted would be contrary to the North Carolina Constitution, would not be binding on the sheriff. There were a number of things, not, not the least of which was an article in the, in the News and Observer, and whatever you think about the News and Observer may be, but in any case, this was an article, and I, I shared this with all the commissioners also some time ago, several weeks ago. And this was, this was concerning a situation where an inmate got ill and was taken to the hospital and passed away. And this, this had apparently just happened not, not too long ago. So the question was asked in this, in this particular article, it says, so why didn't the jail file a report on this man's death within five days? Because it was required to do so. The answer was because he didn't die in the jail. He died two days later at the hospital. His death was from a blood clot in the, in the lungs. They, they did an autopsy and determined that. He had refused to eat and drink in the jail, fearing that someone would poison him. But it was, it was the kind of death, it says, that the State Department of Health and Human Services would investigate to see if the jail followed state regulations. So there was an investigation, and it's continuing. And it, it goes into details about the number of deaths, that sort of things. And then it, it closes by giving 10 steps to reduce jail steps, one of which is to close the loophole that we have discussed in these meetings, requiring jails to file a report when an inmate dies in the jail. The facts of a case that, that we've been discussing here was that same thing that the man, unfortunately, he passed away, but he passed away at the hospital. My understanding was that the family was notified by the hospital, even though it was not notified by the Sheriff's Department. But the, the call on this, on this particular opinion piece was to, to do something about updating the general statutes in this regard. As, as I've told you, and I sent you all emails about this, there are many statutes that place the responsibility of the jails on the Sheriff's Department, et cetera, et Senator Berger was, was quoted in this particular article. I, I would only say to you that, that I don't see, and I told you this upfront when I looked into it, that I could not find a good basis for bringing a, a local ordinance, one we couldn't enforce it. But even, even if we could, we had, we had to find a way to do it. I think we've heard from everyone except the Attorney General's Office. I suspect we're going to hear from them in the next few weeks, next day or two. I don't know. Mr. Richardson may have heard, may have heard from them. I don't know. But beyond this June 27 later, letter. But I, I, I think this is, is an unfortunate factual situation that occurred in this case, and the, I, I believe the family has a way of going, to, to proceed further with it if they choose to. That's the way our system works. And I, I wish it didn't happen. I think we all wish that it didn't happen. But it, I, I don't see any basis to pass a local law in this regard. I think, as I told you to begin with, you should, you should go to your delegation in Raleigh and say, do something about the current law, and put something mandatory in there, something to teeth in about notifying the family. And that's, that's, that's all there is right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I concur with what Brian said. I was with Kevin Saturday, and I asked him the same thing, and as, as bad as I hate to say it, he said that the sheriff is a constitutional officer. He had, he has legislation to go by, and we don't have the authority to put any, the only authority that we have pertaining to the sheriff is dollars and cents. That's what he told me, as recently as Saturday.
Y'all did a wonderful job on the budget of putting the dollars and cents to the sheriff last time. Ed, you're talking out of both sides of your mouth. I asked, I asked for a resolution to stop the stealing in the Sheriff's Department. What'd you guys do? You wouldn't even second it.
Hood, Hood, excuse me.
Go right ahead. Respond.
Hood, Hood, let me tell you something. Every time you can't have your way, somebody's stealing. Now, don't you make me tell what you did. Please don't do that.
Oh, please tell what I did. I don't have any...
Please don't do that.
I don't have...
How you covered up somebody stealing?
Uh, you tell me how I covered up somebody stealing.
Yeah.
Tell me. I want to hear it.
And, and that was in this county. You do?
I want to hear it. Yeah.
Well, it would be too bad.
Tell me. Tell me now, right here in public. I want to hear it, Ed. You've made an accusation now. Let's hear it.
Did you cover up the boy at Social Service?
What boy at Social Services?
Did you cover him up?
What boy? At Social Services?
Be dumb.
Who? You, Ed, you, Ed, you're playing games.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, you're...
I'm not playing games.
You got something, put it on the table.
I'm not playing games.
Both of them.
Do you want me to go ahead and finish?
No.
Okay.
Back off.
Okay.
Back off. Both of you. All right, we're down to the next item. And hopefully we can treat this one a little bit more professional. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to give you an update on the June 19 Finance Committee meeting. Members present were Chairman Waters, Commissioner Langley, and Commissioner Bren. First, they reviewed the March 20 meeting minutes and approved those. After that, Deputy Finance Director Sharon Rose gave an update on the Lot Box Service for the Tax Department, and she informed the committee that that project is on track, and we anticipate going live with that in July. So it'll be up and running before we send out the tax bills. Just want to remind everybody that that will be a Pennsylvania address, so for taxpayers that mail in a check, it will go to the home office in Pennsylvania, the First National Bank Home Office. Also explained to the committee that I had just received notification the day before, on June 18, of an additional audit that was going to be required at DSS for Medicaid. We were discussing that a little earlier this evening. It looks like it's going to cost us about $6,000. I do want to reach out and speak to the folks at the local government commission about that before I bring that back to you for your approval. I do have a few questions about that. The committee reviewed the travel expenses for the prior quarter for all of the Board of Commissioners and the manager, and they were approved. And the Finance Committee began the review of the county purchasing policy. This review should be complete at the next quarterly meeting in September. Any recommended changes or updates will be brought forward to the Complete Board of Commissioners for your approval. The next meeting date for the Finance Committee is September the 18th at 3:00 PM in this room right here. Thank you.
Any, any questions of Anita?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it county policy that all travelers have to use a county credit card?
I'm not going to say it's a policy. We've tried to make that a practice.
Why did we do that?
Just to try to streamline the process. It's much easier from our perspective if we have, you know, one process for travel instead of many different ones.
Is there any employee in the county that's not using a county credit card?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we have a commissioner that chooses to follow a different process.
Is that the only person? Is that the only person in the county?
Mr. Perfect.
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a county credit card.
Purchasing card, it's not a credit card.
You're right. It's a purchasing card.
What is, what, what's the card?
It's a purchasing card.
Purchasing card, I'm sorry.
Any other questions as it relates to the Finance Committee? All right. If not, since we're down to items for decision, we'll go ahead and take our break right now and come back in 10 minutes.
No.
We're down to items for decision. The first one is the water shortage response plans. Christina?
Good evening, Commissioners. As stated in your agenda book, and as you may remember, back during the May Board of Commissioners meeting, we presented to you the revised water shortage response plans. You've approved the plans for both the north side as well as the south side during that May meeting. We then submitted the plans to Division of Environmental Quality, the Public Water Supply Section. They have both approved the plans, and we received an approval letter from the agency on June 11. Included in that letter with the approval is also the requirement that you adopt each plan by resolution, by resolution, and they provide an example resolution, which you will see also in your agenda packet. So this evening, I request that you formally approve the revised water shortage response plans for the attached resolutions.
You've heard the recommendations. Entertain a motion?
A motion.
And a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand.
Those opposed?
Thank you. Down to item number two, the 2018 parking and stormwater improvement contract.
Yes, sir. As part of the fiscal year 2018 capital improvement projects that were approved, there was a project included to do paving and stormwater improvements. Therefore, we issued an RFP to local contractors to provide storm drainage and parking improvements at the Tideland Building and the Francisco Building. Both locations will be included. My recommend, we submitted the RFP, excuse me, we received three bids on June 26. Dudley Landscaping of Washington was, provided the lowest bid. So this evening, I request your approval to award the contract for storm drainage and parking improvements at the Tideland Building and Francisco Building to include alternate number one to remove two peak entries in the amount of $106,600.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor of the contract, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Five, two. All right, item number three, the Beaufort County Water District, State Drinking Water Reserve Offer and Set.
Yes, Commissioners. What you see presented before you, I lumped together the seven different projects. These are all projects that have previously been approved by the Board of Commissioners, and we have received both grant and loan funding for these projects. What, we submitted all of the paperwork, and then we received information from the funding agencies in June, as well as the end of May for each of the projects. And basically, they are requiring us to present it back to you because they have changed some of their requirements. There are new requirements that will require us to comply with federal tax requirements, which we are, of course, willing to do. What they, as you'll see included, they, again, give us the example resolution for you to adopt. We have received the questionnaires, and basically, the questions that they ask on the questionnaires, it appears that they are concerned about approved projects having benefit to private industries or to private firms, and then what the tax implications would be for those firms. Of course, we are an enterprise agent of a local government, so I do not foresee any conflict with us whatsoever complying with the federal tax requirements.
You've heard the recommendation from Christina. Do I have a motion to approve or accept?
A motion.
Question by Commissioner Brenner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the acceptance, offer and acceptance, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was thinking you had the next one, but that's Anita.
Yeah, I'll take that one, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Earlier this evening, we held a public hearing on the advanced metering infrastructure project. As I mentioned earlier tonight, the next step in moving that project forward is to adopt two resolutions. The first one authorizes the county to borrow funds on behalf of the seven water districts, and the second resolution authorizes the filing of an application with LGC for approval of a financing agreement as authorized by North Carolina Statute 160A-20. Those two resolutions can be found on pages 338 and 339. Having questions? Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Question by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio.
I want to make a statement.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going, I'm not only going to take a minute, because everybody's already heard my arguments. I'm not going to vote for this. Because when you spend $4.7 million and you don't get a return on investment, you are increasing the cost of running the water department, and you are not getting anything for it. The whole project needs to be looked at again in order to find a way to get a return on the investment. It's an expense to the people that are using water, and that's all it is, and I'm not voting for it.
Here are none. All those in favor of the resolutions, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six more. Okay, item number five is the North Carolina Department of Transportation requests for a permanent easement at the Gray Road Solid Waste Convenience Site. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My apologies for walking this in on you. We got notification from DOT first to the middle of last week. We're only able to meet with the right-of-way representative on Thursday after the agendas have already gone out. That's why we had to bring this one in. They are, DOT is, is in the, in the process of going through the requirements to replace the bridge over Maple Branch Road, over Maple Branch on Gray Road in Chaco entity. In order to do that, they've got to acquire some additional permanent utility easements, 1.146 acres, and then a drainage... 1.146 acres, and then a drainage utility easement, 0.048 acres, on the property that the county owns at the convenience site. You have the information in your packet that shows, you have a set of plans or a plan sheet that shows that information. Our convenience site is right at the end of the project, right along at Station 20+40, right at the end. They made an offer, when I met with the right-of-way agent, they made an offer of $8,025 for that easement. In conversations with Christina regarding our plans to do work at our convenience sites, we had, they proposed to go in there and widen the driveway, because it is not very wide right now, and they're having difficulty getting some of the big trucks in and out, to widen that driveway as well as extend the culvert and pave a portion of that. Actually, there are a lot of pieces for that entire project, but the piece that would impact with DOT would be the driveway widened and the paving and putting a new culvert. So in conversations with the right-of-way agent, based on the $8,025, it's our belief that we couldn't accomplish all those things that we wanted to do in that area for $8,000. DOT can probably accomplish doing what we want them to do in that for less than $8,000, because they can make it a part of the contract. So it appears to be kind of a win-win for everybody. So what I told DOT was, we would come back to the board and ask that you donate that right-of-way in return for them doing those projects that we wanted to do, those improvements to the property, which was widening the driveway, putting in the new culvert, and paving as far as they can pave up, which they said they could pave up to the fence line. They can't go on, they can't go any further on to the property, but they can pave up to the fence line in return for you granting that easement. We'd be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding that. There's a resolution that's attached with that that they need to allow them to go forward. So I'll answer any questions you may have, but our recommendation would be that it makes the most sense for us to get that done while the contractor's there. We think it, we certainly don't think we could do it as cheap as that, and we think DOT can probably do it that, for that much money or cheaper, so it's probably a good, it's probably a win-win for everybody.
Well, we would have to hire someone to do it, and DOT's already got their people to do stuff like that.
Right. Actually, I think the contractor's going to be doing it, whoever's doing the, making it a part of the plan.
Do you need a motion?
I wouldn't need a motion yet.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Busio, second by Commissioner Brenner. Any questions or further discussion?
I, Mr. Chairman, I just consider this a no-brainer. There's been a lot of complaints about that site, and this will allow us to improve it, and of course, the tax pay is a done.
Well, that, and we've got some additional improvement for it, I'll do an interior, but we'll start that process. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Anatomous. Okay, item number six, 2018 Tax Revaluation Examination Request. Mr. Richardson.
I'll make this as brief as I can. We've already spent a lot of time on it. I think you heard Mr. Pearson make an offer that he would be willing to go back and look at some of this stuff. So I move that we ask the firm to go back and look at every undeveloped lot in the county for the purpose of reevaluation, and that they, again, examine all of the commercial properties, which aren't that many, I'm talking about retail outlets, in Beaufort County. That's my motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was going to second that motion, but previously, there was allegations made against our staff, members of this board, and county manager. Therefore, if this does not get a second, I want to make a motion that requires us to go into closed session to discuss those allegations at the end of this meeting.
Is there a second to?
Well, wait a minute.
To the motion? There's a motion, motion on the floor. Okay.
Your motion.
Pardon?
That was on.
I won't make a, I won't make a motion, but I wanted to suggest something.
Okay.
You know, and instead of doing that, why can't we from, make preparations to change the time period for our revale, change it from eight to four? And I think that'll clean up a lot of stuff.
I'd second that motion. But we have two other motions.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, I clouded it up, so I'll just hold on.
Richardson's first, then mine, then Judge.
Well, you know, I think we should shorten our revaluation period, but that doesn't have anything to do with the fact that we've got a lot of properties in this county right now that are misvalued. This is a sin of today, not a sin of the future.
What you're proposing, what is the cost?
They should do it for nothing. It's their error.
Anita, will they do it for nothing, or we're going to get charged for it?
We'd have to ask.
You don't know, you ask them.
Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Parker?
The question you should ask yourself, would you do it for free? No, if I make a mistake, I correct my mistakes. Don't forget, I'm a professional. You are, you really are.
Bobby, with the average, he said was 5%, he's below the average, so.
These lots are misvalued by 100%, not 5%. We're talking about gross systematic errors in revaluation.
Have you, have you had anyone else call since we ran the ad in the paper?
No, sir.
That would like to come before the E and R board?
No, sir.
Have we allowed everybody that had a problem to come before the E and R board?
We have.
Have you actually reviewed some of the ones that were in question?
I have.
Do you feel good about the valuations that we have?
What I seem to see is most of those lots that are way down, someone has had them for a number of years, and tired of paying taxes on them and want to get rid of them. I think Mr. Pearson answered that, that he didn't think that was a good sale. I don't think we've got that many. We have not had, I mean, everybody's had a chance to do, going through the informal hearing and Board of Equalization, and everyone sure can continue on to the Property Tax Commission and to this court if they have to. I don't think we've got that many problems. That's my, well, I want to say my professional opinion, since I've been there for 25 years, I think I have an opinion.
Okay.
I think we're, to go back and get somebody now, we've got a problem that's going to extend the billing time, getting the bills out. It would have to be completed before we get the bills out.
Do we have the authority to reopen the E and R if we do have an issue that surfaces by your?
I think if we had a number of people calling in and saying, yeah, I need to talk to the commissioners, I think you could handle it as a commissioner, because you are sitting as the Board of Equalization, but somebody could appeal to the commissioners to come over and talk to you after the board closes.
Okay, is there a second to Commissioner Richardson's motion? If not, that dies.
Mr. Chairman, before you move to the next, on a point of order, we left out under items for discussion, tax bills, and since Bobby's up there now, I think we can go back and cover that.
That's fine. You do that.
Yes, sir, I was prepared to do that. We've looked at it very closely, and we think that August the 15th, we should have our bills out. We've had a lot of problems this year, but I think that we're sitting on right now. You said August 15th? August 15th. I think that's one week later than we did last year. I believe it was August 8th last year, but that would make us just a week later. But we've had a lot of problems, so I think we've done very good.
Thank you. You want to continue with your motion?
It's on the floor.
Okay. You want to repeat that?
Yes, based on the allegations that I make a motion at completion of this meeting, we have a closed session to discuss those allegations.
Is there a second? If not, it dies. Okay, item number seven is a resolution in support of the. Pardon?
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were making a comment, I didn't hear a motion.
No, no, I hope I get a second for it. That is that we change, we, well, I don't know exactly how to do this, but we change our process, find out what it would cost us to change our process from an eight-year evaluation to a four-year evaluation, and that way, when you find problems, the property owners don't have to wait an entire eight years, we can fix the problems within four years, instead of going through an eight-year cycle.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, second, to instruct the staff to look at the cost.
Yes, so that we can move towards it. My motion is that we actually do it, but I also would like to know the cost and how quickly we can prepare for it.
As far as the cost goes, I can tell you we're estimating the next revale to cost $1.3 million. So if you take that number and divide it by four, that would be the amount we need to set aside financially, you know, from a financial standpoint each year, to have the money available in four years to do it.
So one of those opportunities that there are, and I know Mr. Parker has mentioned this before, is that you pull that reappraisal piece in-house. You currently have two appraisers, and it's in conversation with Mr. Parker, and we can look at it both ways. We can certainly bring that back to you, look at it from a contract basis, and then look at it from an in-house basis. I think, and I won't speak for Mr. Parker, but what he's told me is that he believes that if you hired two additional appraisers, that that would give him four appraisers, and you could do it in-house with each of those appraisers having about 10,000 parcels apiece, and they could do that on a four-year cycle, and I believe he's comfortable that that would be a good way to do it. Now, we're certainly glad to go and look at that opportunity, and also look at a contract opportunity as well, since this board has typically used a contract to do it, and bring you back pros and cons of both of them. It's not something, obviously, that's going to happen next year, it'd be at least four years, so you've got some time to think about it, you've got some time to look at it and weigh those, but we can certainly do that if the board wants us to move forward on making that, making that come back to you.
Can I say one thing?
If you would. Bobby?
If we had.
This is for Randy's benefit.
We have discussed this, I've discussed it over at the Board of Equalization one night, and I've discussed it with Mr. Allagood on a couple occasions. If we had four appraisers, each one handling about 11,000 parcels over a four-year period, they could get around probably twice on this, on this before they had to do the, had to come in with the appeal for that year, which would be, we're 18 now, 22. That would make sure that every parcel has been visited, every parcel has been remeasured if we need to. It would, in my thinking, it would be a whole lot better system than having a contract over eight years, because they're going to charge you $21 at least, they'll just charge $21 this year, there's probably 23 or 24 if you wait on another cycle. But the thing about it is, in the last two revaluations, we got backed up into a mess where we couldn't back up, we couldn't go forward, so we were stuck at the eight-year cycle. And I think one time we were caught at the top of the ladder, and this time, maybe we had some properties that are still going down. So this is something I think maybe you need to think about and consider. I think it'd be the right way to go from what we see in, over the last two revaluations.
Let's get this motion. Did you concur with Brian's comment about looking at?
Right, both ways.
Okay, okay. Did we have a second? Did you?
I second, and I'm willing to, and as I understand it, we're talking about looking at both ways right now, and I don't have a problem with seconding what's on the floor.
Okay, now.
I have a question.
All right.
I don't know, maybe I'll direct it to Anita or Brian. What is an average cost of an appraiser?
This year's was about a million dollars.
No, no, for an employee?
Certified.
Certified appraiser.
$5.25. Now, what is?
With benefits, probably 40, 50.
About 40,000?
55 or 60. If you include benefits, probably 55 or 60.
50, 60, you said?
Mr. Chairman.
And how many, you would need four additional, how many do you have now?
I have two, I'll need two.
Two, so that'd be six.
I need two more.
Two more.
Okay, thank you. Two more, okay.
Commissioner Brenner?
The only problem I have with that, Jerry, I think it's a good idea, we can adjust our property values that way, but the problem I got with is that we're going to add another million, $200,000 to the budget for revaluation, so instead of spending 1.2, we're going to spend 2.4 in eight years.
No, sir, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do it twice.
Save money.
You wouldn't.
If you do it every eight, every four years, you're going to do it twice.
Well, you would, you would have in-house staff doing it, so you wouldn't do contracted at twice, at four and eight.
Okay.
It should be all in-house staff.
Okay, I got you.
And now, just, you know, to be fair about that, some people like that, some people don't. Some people will say, I got, you got my, you got a fix in for me, because you've already told them what you want it to be valued at, which, obviously, that's not true, but you will hear those comments if you do in-house.
Any others, any other?
I got one question, but do you know of any counties that's doing in-house?
Craven County's doing it.
Who?
Our neighbor next door, Craven County's doing it.
Both sides, pit two.
Pit two.
They're doing it in-house?
In-house.
Okay.
On a four-year cycle. Craven.
Before Bobby sets down, any other questions, comments on the motion that's on the floor? Okay, all those in favor of exploring the cost of two different options, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Bobby? Item number seven is the resolution in support of the boat ramp. That's my agenda item. The mayor of Bellhaven asked me if I would bring this before the commissioners. The town council on their meeting on May the 29th passed a resolution asking the North Carolina Wildlife Commission to come back and revisit doing the ramp, either on the Coopridge property or the Tillman tract that's owned by the county in Bellhaven. So at this time, I'll read that resolution, the resolution concerning the installation of a boat ramp. Whereas this Board of Commissioners is a governing body for the Beaufort County, and whereas this board is in support of asking the North Carolina Wildlife Commission to revisit the original plans to install a boat ramp on the Coopridge or the Tillman property located in the township of Bellhaven, and now therefore be it resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners support and encourage the installation of a boat ramp on either the Coopridge or the Tillman properties located in the township of Bellhaven. Adopted this the second day of July 2018.
Second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was second by Commissioner.
What would Wildlife Commission do with the boat ramp that they just put in a few years ago that's about a half a mile away, that's in the town of Bellhaven?
Commissioner Richardson, what they told, I think, or what I was told, is that they were looking at converting that one to like a canoe and kayak.
The city is, the town is.
The city is.
No.
My understanding from Wildlife, when we were going through this process to start with, a year and a half, two years ago, initially, the town administration was in favor of that. They wanted to have a, you know, we did all the design plans, we were working on a public-private partnership on that, and then that idea changed, and they said, we don't want anything to do with it. A couple things for you, I had, Wildlife said during that time, we will not maintain two boat ramps, we cannot do that. So what we would suggest is that the town take that and make it a kayak launch, a canoe launch, or something smaller, because they don't believe, although at the time, the town said it was fine, Wildlife didn't believe that it was large enough to handle all the volume. I did reach out, after we had some conversation about it, to talk to the engineer for Wildlife who worked on the project with us a year and a half, two years ago, and she said that they had been given information from their director that they were not, that due to budget cuts, they were, they were not in a construction mode now, they were in a maintenance mode. So I tell you that, that they are still interested in doing that project, they would like to do that, but it's going to be a heavy lift to be able to do that, because what they've been told is, we don't have money now for construction because of budget cuts, we have money only for maintenance. But I think it's an opportunity to go back to them and say, we are now unified on that, if the board is, and resurrect. and, and, and resurrect all the work that had gone into that initially with the plans and everything, and, and see if they can, see if they move forward.
Commissioner Brand?
No word that I see in here anywhere recommending for the Wildlife to pay for the boat ramp. Are we scoring partner in that?
Typically, what happens is, they will put it in, and then you would look at, you would help maintain some piece of it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to be able to support this, because you're taking one of the most pristine development properties from the standpoint of economic development that we have in the whole county that's in the town that could be helped a lot by this. And if we, we put this in, you know, and somebody comes along and they want a, a water-dependent development of, for commerce that would provide jobs, we're blocking ourselves. And we already have a Wildlife boat ramp down there, and I think the city is not using foresight in the future of this particular piece of property and wanting to encumber it with, with what we're talking about encumbering it with. And I'm not going to support it for that reason. We got it for economic development. I mean, that's why we have this stuff. And we're, we are diminishing the value to us of this property considerably by putting a boat ramp on it.
Any other, any other comment? Okay. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six one. Okay. All right, we're down to item number eight, bid and offer to purchase proper, property. David?
We have eight offers and deposits. You see there on 344 in your book, those pieces of property, and they're, they're here for approval. Have, have any of these, Katie, have any of these been upset already, these eight that are in the book tonight?
I think one was upset before it started in the book.
Yeah.
It started out at fifty, I think somebody came in.
Okay, all right. So these, these would be the minimum. What, what's been happening is that we get a upset bid before you can see and pass on them. So if you pass on what the offer is, it'll be this amount or more.
Okay.
Somebody still can come and upset these?
Yes.
Yeah. These will be advertised after we approve it in the paper.
Yes.
All right.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Brand, a second by?
Second.
By Commissioner Booth. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the bid and the offers, raise your right hand. I don't think anybody, everybody voted in favor.
Uh, David, how many more pieces of property do we have? I know we're, we're slowly, surely running out.
We got down to one about three weeks ago, and, glad unusual, and we have now about ten or twelve, fifteen maybe, you know, with sales and things that are, that are available. So it's, it's a short list. It's about that long versus, you know, two and a half pages is what it was.
Okay, item number nine is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. We need to select the voting delegate and, do we need an alternate?
No, this one just requires a voting, one voting delegate.
Okay. Entertain a motion to, for somebody to be our voting delegate. Will you make a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Langley, and second by Commissioner Busio and Commissioner Booth.
You don't need.
That's a double. Hi, the chairman.
Chairman.
He very quietly said that, Kate. That's why you didn't hear that. All right, the last item is the one that was on the consent that Commissioner Richardson asked for further discussion. That's item number, that was item number 300, consent, the budget amendment. That was the, I'm sorry, I was about to read the wrong thing. The inmate, Madam, Brian?
Yes, sir. As it, details in the, in the agenda item, this reckon, this budget amendment recognizes unbudgeted revenues. You'll see that on page 17, where we recognize additional revenues under EMS services, under the School Resource Officer Grant, and investment earnings. And then we also made some cuts in some other line items, that is, in the unemployment insurance and the FLSA law impact, to realize an additional $346,000. So there's no additional request out of fund balance for this. We've just adjusted the budget internally to realize those funds to be able to do this. The majority of this increase is due, this, this is an increase to the inmate medical line item, and the majority of that increase is due to the medical treatment of an inmate who is housed at Central Prison. I, I'll answer what questions I can for you. I've had a conversation with the county attorney about how much detail we can have with that conversation simply because of HIPAA laws, but I will tell you this, that there was an inmate that was at Central Prison who had a life-threatening medical emergency in which there had to be emergency services provided, and those were fairly expensive services, and because they are an inmate under your custody, or under sheriff's custody and control, you're responsible for paying those costs.
And that cost was, what, about $350,000?
The majority of that was. I mean, it's, it was, it was probably a little less than that. There was, there were a couple other small pieces in there.
And that inmate was charged with murder?
I, I would, again, from, from advice of the county attorney, if, if you put out too much information that allows you to connect too many things, then you can get in trouble with HIPAA, so.
Well, okay, the, but what you have done, which year's budget did you find the money to pay the $350,000 from?
This is in your previous year, 17, 18 fiscal year, so we're, we're making an adjustment to, because the costs were incurred last fiscal year, we're adjusting that to recognize those revenues and make those changes to that, but that's the way we're required to do that.
The government budgeting doesn't work like anybody else's budgeting. It's amazing. But we're going to write a check this year.
Well, we're going to write the check this year because the, yeah, we do, but it's going to come out of last year's funds, because that was when the service was incurred in last year.
And last year's funds are a dead duck. The budget's over with, everything's dead. It's a very convenient way, it's a very good way to hide expenses, and that's what we're doing with this. That, that, it should come out of this year's budget, because this is the year that we're paying it in, even though it was incurred last year. I mean, we completed the budget, we voted on the budget, we locked the budget down under the general statutes, but we're always going back and we're adjusting the budget, and we're throwing this little thing or that little thing in there. Well, so much for those comments. Now, let's go on to the, to the real comments here. You know, this, this business about health in the jail, it seems like the more money that we put into the jail, the worse the health gets. You know, we got the Health Department over there, we got, we're paying people to take care and do these things, and we still keep accumulating deaths from jail and increased medical costs. You know, what, what is wrong with this picture?
You needed a new jail, and you wouldn't do it?
Sir?
You needed a new jail, and you wouldn't do it?
No, a new jail would not, a, a new jail doesn't change human behavior. So, you know, we would have had the same behavior in, in a new jail that we had in, in an old jail. But my point in this is that prisoners are not assessed for risk to the county, and that is pretty obvious about what's going on in the jail. They're not assessed by the sheriff about what the risk to the county is. It's $350,000. It's more money than we spent on the whole jail medical program last year. Now, we spent on another $350,000, and then we found drug costs in here. We just adjusted the, the budget three or four months ago for about a couple hundred thousand dollars in drug costs. So, you know, where is this going? There needs to be some management put into this. The sheriff needs to take a look at this. We need to assess prisoners based on risk to the county, and, and we need to send them to the places that they're going to get some kind of care or that we can lower that risk. Now, we just had, and the DA has been doing a great job, so I'm not criticizing the DA, but we got people sitting over there in jail right now, charged with murder, that have been there since 2016. We got people over there with two years of sitting in jail waiting on a trial. We got other people that have been there a year waiting on trial, and we got a lot of people that have been there six months waiting on a trial. You know, management of this jail situation, and this godlike sheriff that we have in Beaufort County, is a serious problem to the taxpayers. It's costing you a lot of money. That's the reason I wanted that moved.
Brian?
Yes, sir. Can I address a couple?
Yes.
First of all, to Commissioner Richardson's comment that, that this is not being paid for out of the right place, he's incorrect.
Okay.
The Local Budget and Physical Control Act requires that expenditures that are incurred in one fiscal year be paid out of that fiscal year. That is government accounting, that is GASB standard, that is how the law is written, and that is what we are required to do. If we did not do that, your auditors would come in next year and have a finding on your audit that said you paid money incorrectly out of the wrong budget year. So we're doing that correctly, and I want that to be clear for the record.
Most of us understand that.
Why didn't we know about this before the year ended?
He just died.
I beg to disagree. I think there's some issues here.
He just died. I would explain to the commission that this prisoner was at Central Prison, and that when our deputies went to pick up the, the prisoner, they said, "He's not here. He's in the hospital." They failed to communicate with our staff, any of that. So, but, but when we send a prisoner to Central Prison, they are looked after, they are given medical care. This was a catastrophic medical event that occurred with this prisoner. Whether they are a prisoner or not, they are still pre-trial. So by law, you have to look after them. You can't leave them in the corner and let them die. You can't throw them out of jail because you say, "It's, it's costing us too much money." They are pre-trial, waiting trial, and you by, by law are responsible for paying that cost. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. We've taken as many measures as we can. The sheriff has put in place a stop-loss gap coverage this year. It's my understanding, actually, from the Health Director, that this prisoner was actually put in the system under Southern Health Partners. It didn't have anything to do with our jail health, folks. So I want that to be clear for the record as well.
Who, who makes the decision on sending the inmate to Raleigh?
That, that's, that's a law enforcement, that's, that's the sheriff's office decision. There are multiple reasons why they may do that. They may do that for, for medical reasons. They may move them to Central Prison because there is a hospital facility there, so they may do that. Or they may move them to Central Prison so they can be isolated. When you have a crime that occurs in the county, and you have multiple people who are involved in that crime, you don't want them sitting in the jail, same jail cell, getting their stories straight together. So they separate them. They may send them to one jail, they may send them here. My understanding is, this was a pretty bad person, so they were sent to Central Prison for, for, for iso, for, for, to be looked after. And unfortunately, not something that could have been predicted. You know, I wish we could, I wish we could say that. I wish you could scan somebody and say, "You've got this medical condition that's getting ready to happen, this catastrophic event." I think everybody would, would love to be able to know that. It's just not something we know. It's, it's, it is, it is the roll of the dice, and unfortunately, a lot of the folks that find themselves in our jail system may not be in the best of health to begin with. So you do take on that additional risk.
Got to take in a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Well, you got no choice. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Booth, seconded by Commissioner Busio.
Comment?
Yes.
I want to make one comment on the scheduling for trial. Once the prisoner goes into the judicial system, that determination not made by the sheriff's office, that determination is made by the judge and attorneys involved in the case and the DA. That determines when trial goes on.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I disagree. It's determined by the district attorney, not by the judge, and not by the lawyers.
And I said the attorneys. I said the DA.
You didn't say the district attorney.
I said the attorney.
You said the judge and the attorneys, not act.
Okay, guys.
I, I called a motion.
We're almost, we're almost finished. We're almost finished.
I called a motion.
Well, we've got a motion. Out of a sec.
I called it.
Called a question.
Called a question.
Well, unless everybody has had a chance to speak, I cannot, I cannot interdo that.
I'll withdraw my question.
I've got to ask. Anyone else have any comment?
Hood is right.
It's not, I have one chance.
You hear what I said? Hood is right about this one. It is the DA.
All right, let's vote, gentlemen. All those in favor of the budget amendment, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Three motions in two seconds.